Okay, we'll call this meeting to order of the Planning Commission for Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. Thank you all for coming. Daisy, can I get a confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided?
Yes, I can confirm the packet was posted and the required notice was provided.
Thank you, Daisy. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Coven.
Here.
Commissioner Seidell.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Mike Sell.
Here.
Commissioner Alt.
Here.
Commissioner Farber.
Here.
Commissioner McFadden, and Chair Waters.
Here.
So with seven of eight, we have a quorum and we can proceed with business.
Okay, thank you, Daisy. Are there any corrections to the minutes of the August 5th meeting? And if there are none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the August meeting.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the meeting minutes from the August 5th meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll move into our business items. 3.1, Application PDD 044B.
Do we have a presentation that we will pull up for you?
I have a presentation that we pull up for you here. Okay, so this particular application is for the former Pioneer President's Place, which before that was our Roosevelt-Lincoln Middle School Junior High facility in Salina. The property is bounded by 8th Street on the west, 7th Street on the east, and Mulberry Street on the south. So that gives you kind of the area. The, a quick little background, there's a pretty extensive background for this property, which we have attached into the report. So you have that in your packet, which you can read if you need to. The short nugget one is that the property is part of the original downtown, which was originally platted in nineteen, or 1862. And Lincoln School, which is the north building, was originally, began construction in 1915. And Roosevelt, which is the south building, began construction in 1920. And from 2004 to 2006, it was, this property was redeveloped by the Pioneer Group. And when they were redeveloping the property, they transitioned and converted the school buildings to apartment complex buildings for multifamily dwellings, for elderly people of 55 years and older. And in addition to that, they got the properties put on the National Register of Historic Places, as well as the Kansas State Historic List of Places as well. And so that's kind of the last history that we have, is the building has, or both buildings have been used for elderly housing, and with elderly dwelling units in them, since the early 2000s, which, which brings us to the current request. In this case, Hutton is the applicant. They're a contractor designer, and they are working with the owners for a renovation of the property. And as part of the renovation, they're proposing amendment to the existing PDD. And that amendment would repeal the limitation of the dwellings being occupied by elderly. So it would be open to people of all ages, and not just those persons of 55 years or older. The second amendment that they're looking to do is add two ground signs. The residential zoning district, R3 zoning district typically allows one ground sign, and they're proposing to have two. And we'll get into that in more detail later. And three, they're proposing to modify the number of off-street parking spaces that would be required, from 102 spaces to 58, which 58 is the existing spaces that the site currently has. And lastly, they're amending, or proposing to amend, the landscape planting plan, which we'll also get into in greater detail as we go through the report. So the variations, there are a number of variations that are being requested. There are three variations that the property currently has. So when the property was rezoned to PDD R3 in 2004, there were variations that were approved for the setbacks, for both the Roosevelt and Lincoln set, buildings. Both of them have setback variations that were being, that were approved at that point in time, and the applicant is proposing to carry those over and retain them. In addition to the setback variations and modifications, they are also requesting a modification to allow two ground signs, and a modification to allow this property to have 58 off-street parking spaces in lieu of the required 102. So the role of the Planning Commission in this particular case is going to be two actions that we're going to look at. One is a review of the variations that are being requested. And the second is a review of adjacent land uses in relationship to the preliminary development plan that's, that's being submitted. So Hutton has submitted a site plan, a landscape planting plan, and building elevations for the Planning Commission to review and look at. One clarification, we would also note as staff, and when we're going through the staff report and preparing for the presentation, we noticed that it was a little bit unclear or needed to be clarified on what this process looks like. And so when we have a preliminary plan, preliminary PDD plan, that's being amended, what that looks like is it goes to the Planning Commission for your review, and you would make a recommendation to the City Commission. City Commission would then review that, that, that PDD plan, that preliminary PDD plan. And if they were to approve that, then a final development plan would come back to the Planning Commission for your review at the final stage. The preliminary plan is where we, we do the public hearing. So this is a public hearing item, but it is an item that if it were go to the City Commission and become approved, it would still come back to this body for review again for the final development plan. Looking at the surrounding zoning, to the north, we do have a mixture of C4 and R3 zoning, which is where we have Blue Haven, uh, Blue Haven Studios dwellings and the Flanders Lee House. To the east, we have a parking lot, and we also have Emmanuel Lutheran Church, and that's also C4. To the south, we have R3 zoning with St. John's Lutheran Church. And to the west, we have more R3 zoning with another church and multi-family dwellings. So that kind of gives you the context of the surrounding area. Again, the proposed PDD is going to have four different amendments. One is to repeal the age restriction, so that all ages, or people of any age could occupy the dwelling. The second amendment is the addition of two ground signs. And the third is the modification to allow 58 off-street parking spaces in lieu of the required 102 spaces, and then a modified landscape planting plan. So the first item is, is the, the modification of the age restriction of 55 people or less. We don't really have a plan for that necessarily. It's just, it's, it's the way the property is being used. So the idea is to use, to allow any age group to live and occupy in this space. When we look at the proposed signage, we have two ground signs that are being proposed. Each of them would be in front of the main entrance of the building. So in this case, we have, I'm gonna get a laser pointer function here. So in this case, we do have a proposed ground sign that would be near the entrance of Roosevelt School. The sign is about 10 square feet. It's two feet high, a little over two feet high by five feet wide. So here's an illustration of what that sign would look like. And on the site plan, it shows the location. So as you're on the sidewalk coming from the parking lot, or from, uh, the other public sidewalks, and you're getting ready to walk into the building, that sign will be in front of the building. A similar sign would go in front of Lincoln, as is being proposed, for the RL Lofts. And that sign is also around 10 square feet, two feet tall by five feet wide. The next proposition is off-street parking. So off-street parking is calculated in our off-street parking regulations by use. And for multifamily dwellings, we require two off-street parking spaces for the first 20 units, and then we require one and a half spaces for every unit thereafter. And so what that means, if we have 61 dwelling units, that's going to require 102 spa, parking spaces that would be off-street. And currently, the plan, as it's being proposed, and as it exists today in the field, has two parking lots, each with 59 off-street parking spaces. So if you add those two par, parking lots together, you have 58 total, um, which is, which is a little over half of what's, what's typically required. And so that's why the applicant is requesting variation from that requirement. Now, we would note that if this, if this property were still elderly housing, elderly housing has as half the, the number of required off-street parking spaces that the standard off-street parking regulations require for, for regular housing, or un-age restricted, non-age restricted housing. The applicant in their packet, in your packet, has submitted a, an analysis. And in that analysis, they have kind of five main, or four main points, five main points that they are looking to, um, that they feel justify relief from the strict application of the, the parking requirements. One is the preservation of historic landscape features. Number two is ample surrounding public parking capacity. Three is documents of local car ownership among the residents. And four is transit accessible infill location. And five is the clear precedent for reduced parking in similar historic projects. We will have them, after our presentation, come forward with any questions that you might have. And at that point in time, they'll have a chance to, to explain their arguments in, in more detail, if that's something you would like to, to talk to them about. But this is one of the biggest questions that staff has, and one of the biggest concerns that we have with the proposed project, is that you're going from 102 units down to 58, which would only be 56, a little over 56% of what is typically required. And so that, that's going to be a, a big question for the Planning Commission to think about and consider when you, when you hear this proposal. Landscape planting plan, the, the property has a number of existing trees that are on site from the initial redevelopment that occurred in the early 2000s. They are proposing 17 new shade trees. The property is required to have at least 42 total tree units. And one of the things that staff is going to need in order to confirm that full 42 tree units are there is the existing planting plan needs to be clarified as terms of, of what the types and varieties of all the existing plantings that are being retained are, so that we, we know what's shade trees, what's ornamental trees, so that when we calculate it, we know whether we've hit the 42 tree units or not. That's something that staff can work with applicant on, but it is something to be noted to the Planning Commission. The building elevations, the exterior of the buildings are going to remain virtually the same as you see them today. Most of the work that is being done is restorative maintenance on the exterior of the building, replacing some of the nonhistoric windows with newer windows. Same thing with some of the doors, making sure the brick is all intact, correct, and, and all that kind of stuff. So it's, it's mainly restorative work that's being done on the exterior building. So this is the north elevation of the Roosevelt Building. This would be the south elevation of that same building, looking from, from Mulberry. And then these are the west and east elevations from 7th and 8th Street. And then here is Lincoln. And Lincoln faces into the courtyard, so this is the south elevation. The north elevation butts up against the residential houses to the north, so it's, it's a little more difficult to get a good view of it. But this is what the north elevation looks like on a Lincoln building. And these are the east and west elevations. So they all, as you can see from the photographs and some of the notes that the applicant is proposing, that the only changes that you're going to see are restorative work and replacement of some of the doors and, and windows. So getting into the staff analysis, there are very few physical changes being proposed. The biggest is the conversion of the building and how it's, the buildings, both buildings, and how they're being used, going from elderly housing of persons of 55 years or older to non-age restricted housing, or general multifamily housing. That is, that's the biggest change that you're going to see. And that also creates the biggest question, because the parking requirements for general multifamily housing is twice as, as large as it is for elderly housing. And the applicant is not proposing to add any additional off-street parking. So action items, there are two action items, as I mentioned. One, you can consider whether the PDD R3 zoning for the RL Loft property should be amended to include the following modifications. And in there, I've listed the three setback modifications that are being carried over from the current ordinance of the PDD, as well as the two new ones that are being proposed. One being that two ground signs, one for each building be, allowed to be erected on the property, and a modification to the number of off-street parking spaces being required for the apartment complex be modified from 102 spaces to the 58 parking spaces that are there. The action alternatives that you have with that particular action is the Planning Commission could recommend approval of the proposed amended PDD with the five modifications listed. You could postpone consideration if you feel additional information is needed, or future, to a future meeting date, to allow the applicant to provide additional information. Number three, you could, the Planning Commission could recommend that the proposed amended PDD zoning be denied, which would retain the existing R, um, PDD R3 zoning. This would mean that the RL Lofts would be limited to the existing use limitations and development standards, including limitation that the dwelling units be limited to elderly housing. Action item number two, if after consideration of all the evidence presented at the hearing, you wish to recommend approval of the preliminary development plan for the RL Lofts, you could do that with a, a number of conditions that we have, we have identified. One, being the applicant shall submit or revise preliminary development plan, showing at least 42 existing and proposed tree units on the landscape planting plan along the street frontages. Number two, the development limitations shall be as follows. A, or one, the development of the site shall be limited to multifamily residential apartments containing up to 61 dwelling units and customary accessory use of servicing residents. So this would be an unrestricted, an un-age restricted residency that would be allowed there. Number two, development of the site shall be subject to the development standards and bulk regulations of the R3 multifamily district, with the exception of the setbacks that would be modified. And, and then C, development on the site shall allow for two ground signs, one for each building. And then D, a total of 58 off-street parking spaces, including handicapped accessible parking, shall be provided on the site. Three, following approval of the preliminary development plan, in pass, oh, in passage of an ordinance by the City Commission, a final development plan is substantial conformance with the approved preliminary plan should be submitted to the Planning Commission for final administrative review and approval. Development of this site shall substantially conform with the approved final development plan, as ultimately approved by the Planning Commission, along with the approved landscape planting plan and elevation drawings. Plans for signage and lighting shall be submitted and approved prior to issuance of a building permit. Yeah, that's okay. Oh, there is one more. And then, any substantial modifications proposed as part of the final development plan that are not in substantial conformance with the approved preliminary development plan will require a public hearing before the Planning Commission prior to its final approval. Any future amendment to the PDD ordinance itself shall require restarting the approval process, beginning with the submittal of a new preliminary development plan for a public hearing and recommendation by the Planning Commission, following the final legislative approval via a new ordinance passed by the City Commission. However, if the Planning Commission finds, which, yeah. However, if the Planning Commission finds the proposed amendment to the existing PDD R3 would be incompatible with the surrounding properties, in character of the neighborhood, staff would recommend the Planning Commission provide the applicant guidance on revisions that could be made to the proposed PDD zoning and preliminary site plan or development plan, to better conform to the surrounding areas. This recommendation would involve alternatives three or four. So that, that concludes the presentation. We do have an aerial photo that we can, we can pull up if, and there's any questions or people want to talk about in the surrounding area. We have representatives from the applicant here in the room, and we also have people from the public that have questions after the applicant is, is done speaking or asking and answering questions with, with staff and the, and the board.
Okay, thank you, Dustin. That was a lot, so we appreciate it.
There was a lot. And that was the summarized version, so.
Yeah. Thank you. Good job. All right. Um, let's see if we have any questions for staff first, before we move on.
I, I have one, Dustin. And, and one of the explanations for the reduced off-street parking is a clear precedent for reduced parking in similar historic projects. Can you bring to mind, or bring to the front, what precedents have been set in the past?
Well, I think the concern would be that if you were to just approve a parking variance offhand without ju, solid justification, it could open up the door for other developers to come forward with projects that, um, in which they, they request parking variances that might be harmful to this running neighborhood. And so.
Well, I'm, I'm not talking about future. I'm talking about, in, in the packet, it was saying, as in the past, there has been clear precedent set before.
Oh.
Can you give examples of that?
You're talking about what the applicant, the applicant's.
Correct.
Yeah.
Or is that a question?
Yeah, that'd be an, that'd be a question for them, sorry.
I will hold that.
I misunderstood your question.
Well, excuse me, the, uh, it has on here, it shows the Lee Lofts, and it shows what their, uh, parking is in relation to this. Uh, I would assume that would be the comparison that they're referencing.
Yeah, that's, so that is in part of their analysis. So when they get up to talk about their analysis, Lee Lofts is a property that, um, has been developed in a similar fashion that they can talk about. Sorry, I jumped the gun.
No, that's okay. Are there any, oh, go ahead.
We, I don't know if it's helpful, because I don't know if it's good to have before we do our discussion, but we did put together possible findings in support and denial of, of application. Um, I don't want to just read to you, but I think, given that we have a number of people in the room, it might be a good idea to go through those before we have our discussion. So, yeah, let me do that. Let me just get that pulled up on the screen. Um, if I can pull it up here, give me a moment. You know what, let's do some conversation, and then I'll, I'll, I'll dig it up, and then we can go through them. So if, if you'd like to speak with the applicant, that would be, that would be a good time.
Okay. Uh, are there any other questions of staff before I ask the applicant to come forward? Okay, hearing none, would the applicant please like to come to the podium and state your name and address for the records for Daisy? And we'll then open it up for discussion.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Tony Kresnick. I own Flynn Hills Holdings Group. Uh, we're located at 7301 Mission Road, Suite 326 Prairie Village, Kansas.
Okay. All right. Um, go ahead.
Would, would you like me to start off with questions, or just give an overview?
Uh, let's do, um, an overview first.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, I own Flynn Hills Holdings Group, like I mentioned before. Uh, some of you are probably familiar with me. I'm also the developer and owner of the Lee Lofts Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, which was recently approved, uh, as well as, uh, the parking lots associated with them, and then the, the one-story building as well. 50/50 partners with our friends at Overland Property Group on those projects. And I think somebody mentioned it earlier. Um, not only did the Lee Lofts, I believe, receive a parking waiver, for lack of a better term, due to its proximity downtown, but also because of the nature of the historic buildings that we were redeveloping, and also the affordability that we were providing. Um, and while that's great, um, that's actually very common for historic preservation projects. As you can imagine, when you're dealing with the State Historic Preservation Office, the National Parks Service, they want to make sure that parking lots and lights associated don't encumber their buildings. And even in, uh, towns like Kansas City, which is the first project I ever did, they completely waived all parking requirements for historic buildings, because it's not very preservationist in nature to tear down a historic building next to a historic building, just so you can find a parking lot underneath, right? And so, um, I, I believe what we're, what we're doing here is very, very common, um, in terms of asking for the parking waiver. Um, and I will also note, um, that the only reason that we are taking the existing 61 apartments and going back in with 61 existing apartments with the change from 55 and older to unrestricted is because the property fell in disrepair over the years. We bought it about a year and a half ago. Um, and we closed on the construction loan about two months ago. But the property fell in severe disrepair, um, because two out of three people that came that wanted to live in the apartments, we had to say no to. And so if you think about it, from a 55 and older standpoint, if you're 54 years old and you want to live there, we just have to say no, right? And at the time, I believe, when the free, uh, when the Pioneer Group, um, developed the property into affordable housing, I believe that every single unit was affordable. Um, which means that if you have somebody that makes $1 too much that works at the hospital, you also have to say no to that guy or gal. And so the coupling of those restrictions, um, we estimate resulted in two-thirds of the population here in Salina, some of which are in the most need, not being able to apply even if they wanted to. And so I, I do have a few bullet points that'll probably come up. I'll try to beat you to it. Um, uh, we are rebranding the property, RL Lofts, um, back to the, you know, paying homage to the historic nature of the Roosevelt-Lincoln Lofts. And it is roughly a $20 million investment. Unfortunately, I believe, a little bit more than a $20 million investment as it stands today. Um, we, um, since we're outside the initial 15-year, uh, affordable housing compliance period, we could have asked for a waiver to completely remove all affordability. Um, not only did we decide to, uh, keep the property affordable with 80% of its units being rent restricted to people that make 60% of the area median income or less, roughly $40,000 in the, in the city of Salina. Um, but we, uh, also included 20% of the units to be market rate. So again, we don't have to turn people away. So 80% will remain affordable, 20% will remain market rate. And even though we could have elected out of all of the affordability, we signed a land use restriction agreement for an additional 30 years with the state of Kansas. Um, and that, uh, that has been recorded at your county as well. So the property will remain affordable for another 30 years. Bear with me, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um, okay, had one more, uh, one, uh, little bit more to share with you. Um, there's some borderline comical rumors going around. Um, we, uh, we had to remove a gentleman via police, uh, that broke into our building down into the basement, and had some pretty colorful, colorful Facebook ads going around, saying that we're kicking everybody out, that it's not going to be affordable anymore, people are being displaced. I wanted to make sure that we got ahead of that and told you exactly what was published, exactly what was done. Every step of the way was, uh, submitted and approved by the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. So instead of giving the standard 30-day notice to vacate, all of our tenants, to my knowledge, are on month-to-month leases, we gave the 30-day notice to vacate only at the Roosevelt Building alone, leaving the entire Lincoln Building available for people that could not find an alternative. that could not find an alternative place. We gave the full security deposit back, refunded in full, no matter the condition of the unit, and they were allowed to leave behind any items that they wanted to and would not be charged still while receiving their full security deposit. If they chose to relocate from the Roosevelt Building to the Lincoln Building, we gave them a $500 incentive to relocate. If they chose to relocate off-site, we gave a $1,000 incentive. And in addition to that, we paid for the moving company at our expense to provide all of the supplies, pack their items, load their items, and unload their boxes at their new location, went above and beyond, right? And every single one of the tenants that wished to stay on our waiting list is on the waiting list, and they will be offered the right of first refusal to move back in once the $20 million investment has been made. So, anyway, definitely wanted to clear that up as well, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up to the commission for questions.
You mentioned one of the reasons, opening it up to age, no age limits, being that you were turning away people. What is your occupancy rate right now?
Well, we've moved everybody out of the Roosevelt Building. We have 11 people left at the Lincoln Building, so if you don't mind backing up a few months, you know, to give a somewhat accurate representation of what the occupancy was, I bet it was right around 60 to 70%. Specifically, the Roosevelt Building had taken on a lot of water damage. I was told five to six years ago, the roof started leaking, there wasn't money to repair the leak. And of the Roosevelt Building alone, I believe six of those units were not occupied going back roughly four to six years ago. And so, occupancy at that property, to my knowledge, has not been much better than 70% even before I bought it in recent past.
So, in your projections, then, what do you project your occupancy rate to be if you open it up to all ages?
We will be 100% occupied. We have, I believe, 11 properties currently, even properties that need to be renovated, and our blended occupancy is over 90% in the three states that we work.
What would your occupants be, if you projected, if you just kept it at the 55 and over after you get everything redone? I mean, I know that's a guess, but...
I'm guessing it'd be 70%. It wouldn't be self-sustaining. We've done this three times in the past, once in Parsons, Kansas, and Lebette County, twice in Fort Scott, Kansas, and Bourbon County, under a 55 and older designation. In all three instances, we removed... We lobbied the state or requested of the state to remove the designation, and once they took a look at the numbers, they allowed us to remove the senior designation in all three instances.
And the occupancy went up then, probably?
Yeah, to my knowledge, it's 100%, yeah. Again, it's a matter of turning away two-thirds of the population between the age restriction and having zero market rate units.
On the parking situation, the 58, is that just the maximum you can realistically look at then? Because otherwise, you're going to be taking a grass area. Is that right?
Yeah, that's a great point. 58's what's there now. The buildings, we're not moving hardly any walls, we're just rehabbing what is there now, and I think it might be in your report. It's not just up to us. The State Historic Preservation Office is also involved in this, and I believe they specifically call out for the green space to remain. Is that correct? So, this project, yes, it is using state and federal affordable housing tax credits since we are re-upping the affordability period, but it's also using state and federal historic tax credits, and I should have mentioned that earlier.
So, 58 is what was approved initially when this was changed from a school to the facilities they are now, right?
To my knowledge, what I can tell you is that there was 58... There was 58 parking spots before for the 61 units, and we are simply asking for the 58 spots to be good enough after our $20 million renovation for the same 61 units.
Just to highlight and kind of expand on Mr. Kresnick is sharing with you, there is a green space area on the facility or on the site, I'll zoom in on. And so, given the time of year in which the aerial photos were taken, the grass is not really green, so it's a little harder to make out, but there is green space here with a recreational walking track, and this green space is part of the condition that the Heritage Commission, or not the Heritage Commission, but the State Preservation Office approved with this property being historic. So, what Mr. Kresnick is saying is that maintenance of this green space is part of their staying in line with state requirements for their tax credits.
Is there square footage that the green space has called out? Like, you have to have so much green space, or it has to be this specific green space? This can't change at all? It has to be this?
Yeah, right now, it's this specific green space, and, you know, to be honest with you, if I was designing the green space, I would have designed it differently. To get that changed with the State Historic Preservation Office, could take months, it could take over a year. I have not read the original National Registry documentation in quite some time now, but oftentimes, they will actually take it a step further and refer to the spaces historic open space, which we've dealt with before in Lawrence. But, as you guys probably are aware of, we are under construction, and we are... We do not have time that we are aware of at this moment to go to the State Historic Preservation and ask for a complete reconfiguration of the green space.
No, I understand that. I was just...
Yeah.
If there was specifically can't be altered, or if it just gave a square footage amount that had to be there.
To my knowledge, I don't think they call out for square footage.
We had proposed an alternate lot that was... Sorry, I need to go up.
Name and address, please.
Name and address.
Yes, please.
Matt Byer with Hutton, address 111 North Sycamore, Wichita, 67203. We had developed and proposed an alternate parking layout that basically preserved the same amount and was a linear pass-through between Seventh and Eighth, and created a more contiguous square open space. And in working with the Historic Preservation Consultant who works with the State Historic Preservation Office, they said that that was basically contrary to the original, and even though it would have made a more usable, nicer green space in a lot of our opinions, they basically said that it was unlikely to pass with SHPO and the State Historic Preservation.
I guess that would lead to my question, is if this variance, so to speak, is not given with the parking, what options do you have?
I mean, technically, we're... The project's bankrupt, obviously, right? But I've worked on a lot of these projects to know that, or from my experience, you know, go through this in Lawrence, Kansas, bad example, Lawrence, Kansas completely got rid of all of their parking requirements in downtown areas. But before they did, you know, we would consider neighboring on-street parking, which obviously this has some of the best, if not the best, on-street parking in the entire city, just because of the nature of it taking up the whole block. Then you have the parking, the public parking lot literally across the street. So, from a technical standpoint, the project would be bankrupt, the doors would be shuttered, it'd be blighted, but I don't... I have not seen that happen in a situation like this, especially when we are not adding new buildings, or come and saying, hey, there's 61 units today, we have a better program, we were just... We just received an award to put in a $20 million renovation to make the 61 units nice, frankly, nicer than they were 18, 20 years ago when they were redeveloped for the first time.
And with the parking spaces based upon dwelling units, is there any option to reduce the number of dwelling units?
No.
Okay.
No, that's a great question. I'll say it two different ways. One, from the standpoint of KHRC, we received a competitive award because we stated that we were going to keep their 61 units of affordable... 61 existing units, which we did. What I can also tell you is that I believe that under this new program, especially based upon our experience in the success of Lee Lofts Phase One, Lee Lofts Phase Two, I wish there was 81 units, you know? That is not the case with the property I toured earlier in the day on my way out here, but 61 units, I can fill them up, we can keep it full. Probably the same thing with 81 units. That wasn't an option. When you're going back in for renovation and preservation of existing affordable housing, KHRC wants to see the existing units that they have and post-award, which were obviously post-war as we're under construction. It would be almost if not impossible to change things like unit count.
On the way that... And this is a question for you, Dustin, too. When you figured the 61 units based on not an age group, were you considering that being all of the 61 units being not... Or 55 and under?
Well, when we calculate off-street parking for multifamily dwellings that don't have any age restrictions at all, it's just a standard one or two parking spaces for the first 20 units, and then one and a half parking spaces for every unit after that. So, it becomes a mathematical formula, and it doesn't give any weight to whether they're 55 or older or not because it's just open to anybody of any age group. So, the only age restriction that the code has is for elderly housing, and that reduces the number of off-street parking spaces on the assumption that people of elderly housing don't have as many automobiles.
Yeah. I'm trying to wrap my head around this whole thing. I think if you open this up to people 55 and younger, you are going to need more parking spaces. But I guess my question for you is back... It's a projection question again. What do you think the percentage of people that are going to be 55 and older versus the people 55 and younger?
Oh, shoot. I don't know. I hope everybody in town wants to live here, and I think they will after we do this. I will say that the... On one hand, we rebranded on purpose, right? I want this fresh ribbon-cutting celebration event to be called something else, hence RL Lofts, start anew. With that being said, we have a lot of our seniors that have expressed strong interest in wanting to come back, so I do think that it would be a little bit more on the 55 and older versus what you would see at our ribbon-cutting at Lee Lofts Phase Two a few months back. So, I do think that that age is going to go up compared to a brand-new construction building that did not have an existing waiting list, almost if not exclusively with people that are 55 ages or older. But what Troy just pointed out to me, on page two of your packet, they have some data in there about what the true car ownership is for a Lytec unit, and it is .6 cars per Lytec unit. And I can confirm this on all of our properties in Lawrence, Kansas as well, and the Warehouse Arts District. We've done four projects now. We built... Before Lawrence changed the rules, we built these big, huge parking lots. They're never half-full, you know? And so, that would coincide with the data that you guys have on page two, which is .6, which puts us over even at the 58 existing stalls.
A couple... A point and then a question. So, you're involved... You did the Lee Loft thing, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you have 67% of the units with parking provided, 69 out of 103. You'd be providing 95% for these 61 units at 58, so that, I think that's a positive.
Thank you.
My main question is, when did you purchase this?
Call it a year and a half ago, I was involved in the ownership group that purchased it. The new entity that was formed that purchased the property for specifically the redevelopment happened roughly two months ago.
Okay, I guess my question is, why wouldn't have you purchased this contingency on getting some of this approved beforehand?
That's a great question, Commissioner. We should have.
Well, I'm not saying it won't be approved, it's just that this is kind of a big deal, it seems like to me, that... And I'm not saying I'm against it, I just was curious.
There's no question, it was an oversight on my end, and is enormous of a deal as this is, we were focused on other items at the time, such as saving this from forec... You know what I mean? I mean, it was in dire straits, and I've got to admit, I was not a... I was naive in thinking that taking 61 units, parking lot included, the entire site and putting $20 million into it, what would be considered a rehab effort, not a new construction effort, and that 100% is on me. You know, Lauren and her team are always wonderful to work with, and it's frankly nobody's fault other than my own for this oversight, and it was definitely an oversight.
Okay, well, that's okay. I just was kind of curious, so, thank you.
Thank you.
What are the apartment sizes?
Yeah, we have one bedrooms and two bedrooms. Like I mentioned before, we are not adding or removing hardly any walls, with the exception, we are building a small mechanical closet, which should have been done 20 years ago instead of shoving up everything up into the, literally, the rafters. But they're the exact same as they were before, primarily ones and twos.
Okay. If this were to be approved with the spaces, the parking spaces you do have, how will you determine who gets those from the occupants?
Oh, it's first come, first served.
Come first served, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
It really is, and especially with all of the on-street... I mean, if you take a look at the configuration of these parking lots, part of the reason that those lots were always empty, or 50% occupied at best the 30 times I've been here, is because there is great on-street parking, in some cases closer to the doors.
Yeah.
So...
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioners, are there any other questions of the applicant? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Dustin, did you have any further comments before we open it up to the public?
I don't... I did find a document that has the possible findings in support of the application, and also...
Dustin, can't hear you. Are you on?
Sorry. Thank you. Mike was not on. I did find our document that has the possible findings in support of approval of the proposed application, as well as the findings in support of denial, depending on what you want to... Which direction you want to go. I can either go through those now, or we can hear from the public first and hear some of their comments. It's kind of up to you on how you want to do that.
Let's go ahead and hear from the public first. Okay. All right, so if there's members in the audience who would like to speak, we are asking that you limit your talk to three minutes, and we will have a timer set, and you'll need to state your name and your address for the record. So, we'll just each come up one at a time, and we'll proceed from there, so...
Can I hand you guys stuff, or do I got to give it to them?
Um, them.
So, excuse me.
Name and address. Can you state your name and address?
Yeah, my name is John Holloway, 217 South Ninth.
Thank you.
That's my address. I didn't bring enough, so you guys will have to share. But I did want to contribute today. Let me find all my stuff. So, yeah, I'm here tonight to expose a critical issue harming Salina's most vulnerable residents and misusing our public funds at formerly known as Pioneer President's Place. I'm the guy that they trespassed. I didn't break and enter. It was all livestreamed. The residents said, hey, go walk through the building and tell us what you think. So, I did, and I put it out for the world to see, and they trespassed me. Anyways, so, the core problem is not just neglect, it's what's called subsidy harvesting, and it exploits our elders, and it takes our tax dollars, and it really demands y'all's immediate attention. So, while the renovations have already begun on the property, let's not forget the year... have already begun on the property, let's not forget the years of profound neglect that led to this point. Right at the beginning of August, this, since they're asking for landscaping stuff, this was the landscaping situation at the beginning of August on this property. I went ahead and started fixing that on my own. And that's what they trespassed me for, was mowing the grass for them, I imagine. Anyways, the property's own physical needs assessment that you have in your hands documented the widespread issues, the mold, the damaged windows, structural concerns and fire alarms that residents say go off all the time, which while I was there, there was a random fire alarm that went off on its own. It took the fire department over ten minutes to get there. And then they just turned it off and left. So these renovations that are going on now are happening after, like the property owner said, after a very, very short notice to vacate in Salina. You guys are all aware of Salina's housing market and how hard it is to get a house in Salina. He's probably not because he doesn't live here. And so when these people go out, I talked to two ladies there, two ladies, over fifty-five, disabled people. One of them had a job at Bed Bath &amp; Beyond making eleven fifty dollars an hour. Both of those ladies had to move to Enterprise because these guys kicked them out. Anyways, subsidy harvesting, millions of funds run through the thing. They get all their, they get all their stuff that they're talking about here and then they start changing the rules. Mr. Tony said that...
Sir, your time's up. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Holloway.
You're very welcome.
Okay.
Tony Krasnic has about six businesses involved with this property. So you might want to ask him where those tax dollars are going.
Okay.
I wouldn't give them a dollar.
Okay. Welcome and please state your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Pastor Jacqueline Thornton. I live at 673 South Santa Fe, but I'm the pastor at Emmanuel Lutheran Church, which is right across the street from this development. First, I want to address the issue of the variance for the age. I think other people are going to address the parking issue. We have one member who was a resident there, had an extremely difficult time finding alternative housing when they were required to move prior to the beginning of the renovation. There are thirty units in Roosevelt. Six to seven of those units, according to the presentation, were uninhabitable due to water damage. So at seventy percent occupancy, that was twenty-one units or twenty-two inhabited, seven damaged. So it was really quite close to actually one-hundred percent of the habitable units. The variance is asking for an either-or. Either it's totally eliminated for age or it stays the same. I would urge you to consider requiring that the variance perhaps be modified to have first choice for those fifty-five and older and only open to the general public if there are not sufficient applicants to fill one-hundred percent. We know that it is very difficult to find housing for older individuals in Salina. And yes, it is difficult for all people who are low-income, but it seems not quite fair to address the issue of low-income housing by taking away the housing for the fifty-five and older. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Rebecca Norland. Would you like my address?
Please.
Okay. Sorry. Fourteen oh-nine Sunrise Drive, right here in Salina. I'm an activist, actually, for the community of Salina here. And I would like to know if I can give the rest of my time to John Holloway.
Dustin, you'll have to help me out on that.
That's up to you. You may, if you have your mind still.
Okay. Yes, that's, I'll allow that.
All right.
Okay. The clock has started, though.
What's wrong?
Oh, stop.
Okay. So, picking up where I left off, my core request confirmed that there was, through this property, millions of dollars in public funds, including the LIHTC since two thousand and four, and a substantial tax rebate that this commission unanimously approved last year, Resolution 24-8203. These funds were meant for affordable housing, not for facilitating displacement and market rate conversion. Furthermore, Scott Van Binsbergen is a Minnesota State Rep. Why is he dealing with property in our community? He can stay up in Minnesota. Commissioners, where was the oversight during these years of neglect for this property? Why were our codes not enforced? And why did we kick people out instead of trying to fix what was there while they were there? The public's investment has not been protected and our elders have not been safeguarded. So here's some immediate action from the council. You have a responsibility to protect our citizens and our public investments. We demand that you immediately formally declare the property a public nuisance due to the history of neglect and ongoing impact of displacement. Initiate aggressive code enforcement for any remaining violations at 220 South Seventh and ensure the renovation process at 245 South Eighth is conducted safely and transparently with full accountability to the community. Third, begin legal proceedings for receivership or eminent domain to acquire this property because that is the only way to ensure it truly serves the public good. Continued inaction is complicity in the exploitation of our elders and the misuse of our tax dollars. The community is watching. Thank you. And you have the more detailed proposal there in front of you. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Next.
Madam Chair, can I address something very quickly?
Yes.
Mr. Holloway, I appreciate what you're saying here and I appreciate the packet that you've put in front of us. I believe some of your urgings that you have here for the city commission, I believe you're in front of the wrong board here. We are the planning commission.
No, I know. It's fine. I've just, this was the first opportunity for me to get and to, in front of people, to point out what is going on at this place.
Sure.
These guys bought this property eighteen months ago, knowing that this was the situation it was in, left these seniors there for eighteen months, collecting their rent, collecting our tax dollars. And then when they finally got their little construction project approved, they kicked them out into the summer, into this low housing market that we have, canceled their landscaping contract and said, see you later.
And I appreciate your passion and I appreciate what you're saying, but we did not approve a tax rebate or anything like that.
I know. I'm sorry.
Some of the comments were directed towards the wrong...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Sure. I'm just making a clarification there.
I still urge you guys, deny these people everything they're asking for.
Thank you.
They are completely ripping this community off.
Thank you, Mr. Holloway. All right. Next.
Yes, my name is Corlene Lang at twelve oh-eight Highland Circle here in Salina. And I am a member of Emmanuel Lutheran Church. So first of all, I want to be sure that we have accurate information in the information. I'm reading the August sixth letter that Hutton sent to the city, it's Salina Planning Commission. It was in your packet. It talked about the off-street or on-street parking. And it said that Seventh Street Parking, there supports approximately thirty-five spaces and Eighth Street supports thirty additional spaces. Well, I can't, I don't know how to measure all that, but I can tell you with a bus, says parked there on Seventh, I don't know how there's thirty-five spaces on Seventh Street. Also, in some of the information in the packet, it talks about when the school was there, you know, it worked fine with parking. But I don't think that's a fair comparison because, one, that was only during the weekday when the teachers were working. This would be a hundred percent of the time. I also, so my concern is, is there enough off-street or on-street parking to withstand the stiefel, the businesses on Santa Fe that back up to the parking lot, as well as the new medis, they're parking all over there on Seventh Street? And how many spaces is it really going to take for multifamily? So you're thinking, well, there's probably two people in each of those units, but that have cars. And I don't think we probably have to worry about families that much because if it's the same one-to-two-bedroom allocation, there weren't that many. There were only five and seven. I don't know if those will be the same. But my concern is, is there really enough off, on, let's see, on-street parking for that? And how does this really compare to the national averages that they're putting in there? And I think I appreciate your consideration.
Ma'am, excuse me.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming forward. You live on Highland, is that right?
Highland Circle.
Okay. So did you used to live in this property or not?
No. I just go to church and I met the church a lot. One of our members lived there. And I can tell you that grass, about a month ago, we thought, gosh, are they ever going to mow this grass? This is going to look awful forever. So, no, that's my interest in this.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Kim Frederick. I'm the senior pastor at St. John's Lutheran Church, which backs up to this property all along Mulberry to the south. Excuse me. So I printed all my stuff because I had a few things to say. First of all, I'm here to speak on behalf of my congregational leadership. They asked that I come and speak before you in opposition of the amendment around the parking. However, first, this is what I want to say. I appreciate the commissioners. I appreciate developers. I appreciate contractors in town who are working so hard to get us the housing that we need in town. My allergies. When my husband and I moved here about three years ago, it took three trips here to Salina to be able to find housing for us when we moved to town. But now we live on Tasker Lane and things are fine. Salina prides itself on its hospitality and lively downtown. And I love that about the community. That's one of the reasons we moved here. My husband was raised here. We remember what Santa Fe looked like forty years ago. And it's nice to see the way it looks now. As downtown in Santa Fe itself continues to evolve, though, parking will only continue to become more difficult. And we know there's more things coming for downtown. We know that will happen. As a hospitable community, those choosing to live downtown should not have to be tasked with wondering where they will park when they get home, from work or for shopping, for traveling. St. John's Lutheran Church, located on Mulberry Street between Seventh and Eighth, is just one of four churches located on the south side, on the south side of Roosevelt School. We ourselves have experienced several times since my tenure here, the need for additional parking, whether it's for special events, for significant funerals, attendance with funerals. We've had people attending some funerals park as far north as the Catholic Church. With that, I've requested parking permission from First Presbyterian, from Emmanuel Lutheran Church, and from the temple itself, to provide the parking that we would need for these special events and funerals. And with the hospitals' need for additional parking, and now with the great response in town to medis, right, even parking's become more difficult along Seventh Street. And occasionally on Mulberry because of medis. I'm really concerned about the safety of people needing to park along Seventh Street, Eighth Street and Mulberry to enter into these apartments. The traffic on...
Your time is up.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, thank you. All right. Well, next.
Hi, Commissioners. I'm David Norland, six oh eight East Republic here in Salina. And I want to give you a note of sympathy. I've sat on that chair and I know kind of what it's about. Chad, I appreciate you pointing out that what comes to the planning commission goes on the city commission. The big dog can overrule you in a snap of a finger. And I also commend you on wanting to, having a healthy suspicion of government. It's nice to see you involved in that. And Patrick, I value your superior length of tenure on planning commissions.
Thank you.
So that said, one of the things that strikes me, and I'm giving you a statistic that I haven't tested, I haven't checked for sure, but as I understand it, this project now has a ninety-five percent property tax abatement for fifteen years, even after the significant amount of city taxpayer contribution to the establishment of the original project. Combined with state and historical kickbacks, if you will, or room, financial room for the developers, it is a pretty significant donation of our taxpayer dollars to this project. I, for one, am really, I like the idea of having, of what happened here, of having those properties available, of having it available to people affordably. And I don't know the ins and outs and the mechanics of the eighty percent that Tony mentioned. So I don't know whether, how affordable they will remain. But it sounds to me as though they will become more expensive and more profit to the developers. So I can't speak with expertise about that. But when I look at what's happening, it feels like there's a lot of railroad train coming down the track. And I know that you are just planning commissioners. This city commission will have final say about that. But I do think that a healthy skepticism and perhaps initial rejection of this entire proposal then might stimulate further conversation in the city about the degree to which our taxpayer dollars are subsidizing this and still hopefully be able to reach that final goal of having good, affordable housing. And by the way, I want to note that at least by my looking, I may be wrong, but I'm betting that at least half or more of this planning commission could still get apartments there. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anyone else from the public in the audience today wish to speak? Okay. Dustin, is there anyone online who would like to speak?
We have one individual online, Erica Toner. I'm not sure if she wants to speak or not, but we do have an individual online.
Ms. Toner, do you wish to speak?
She says not at this time.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Commissioners, do you have any other questions of staff or the applicant before we move into discussion?
Well, I...
Yes, yes. You can...
I'm not employed by Mr. Krasnic. I'm a consultant to him. Am I allowed to speak on behalf of some things that have been said kind of in response?
If you're part of the applicant's team, you can help represent the application.
Yeah, so I'm a consultant.
Sure. Yes.
Okay. Please state your name and address.
My name is Troy Smith. My address is 403 Fremont Drive, Lawrence, Kansas. I am the president-owner of One Five Three Consulting. If you say, what does that mean? I'm a recovering developer. I've been in construction development for about thirty years, doing a multitude of things, single-family home, multifamily home, done lofts, retail, mid-rise, distribution centers. Mr. Krasnic is a client of mine, among many, both in and out of the Lytec world and in the state of Kansas and several other states. There were some things that were said today that are just, they're not factually correct. I represented Mr. Krasnic in this transaction for the closing. If you've never been involved in a Lytec transaction before, it's a little bit overwhelming. I'm used to an equity team, a lender and the developer team. There are multitudes of people on these calls, multiple attorneys. I can assure you, there is nothing nefarious going on. There's no shell games with money. Mr. Krasnic owns one entity involved in this, not six. I'm not certain where that information came from. I was directly involved in the closing. I was the one that ran the closing for months. That is simply incorrect. There was an issue made of the grass. So when the closing happens, the entity that owns the facility no longer owns it. So all the contracts to maintain it, including mowing the grass, go away. That was taken over by Hutton, which didn't start for about thirty days. That was taken over by Hutton, which didn't start for about thirty days. In the summer this year, we had a normal amount of rain, which is why the grass got so tall. It wasn't a matter of cost cutting. It was a matter of one entity went away, as did the contract, and then on the other side, you have a contract that hadn't started yet. So there was just a gap. It was nothing, again, nothing nefarious, no hiding of money. Commissioner Farber, you spoke a lot about the parking, and I appreciate that. It's not the first time I've, I've dealt with, with parking invariances. When we talked and looked at the parking variances here, what I did was I looked at Lytech trends nationally. And that's where the information that's in your packets came from. It's the national Lytech trends. The state of Kansas does not particularly track that, but the state of Kansas has been found to be in line with that. And it said that approximately point five eight percent of people own cars, because one of the things about Lytech, when you apply, you, there are certain boxes you have to check. And one of the things is, are you close to public transportation? Are you close? How far are you from a grocery store, from a mall, from shopping? These are things you literally must apply for. And the reason is because car ownership is so low traditionally across the U.S. We're all aware, our federal government loves to track data. And our findings were in line for the state of Kansas with national trends. But again, I want to be very clear. Kansas does not specifically track that data, but the federal government tracks it all across the U.S. So with that, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I guess I have one.
Yes, sir.
The parking issue, weren't fifty-eight? Isn't that the number that was approved before?
Yes, so all the parking stalls that the applicant is requesting be required for the facility are all existing. So there are no proposed changes to the number of units, and there are no proposed changes to the number of off-street parking stalls. The defining characteristic change that's taking place is we are going from elderly housing of persons of fifty-five years of age or older to just general population occupancy of these units. That's the primary change.
And then that creates a new formula for parking, is that right?
It creates a new formula for parking.
One comment, maybe this isn't the right time, but we've heard a lot about the tax issues and tax breaks and all that. That really isn't part of our gig here.
I understand.
I mean, we weren't, I don't think we were involved in that to start with, so I'm not going to ignore it, but it really doesn't have any bearing on what's going on here.
No, and I would like to, that's a great point. I'd like to address that. A tax break does not flow to the developer's pocket. It flows to the entity that owns it. And you would say, well, he owns it. Lytech is very specific about how much money a developer can make when they're developing a unit. And then that tax break is such that the entity can remain more affordable, because the entity is not at full market rates. It's at reduced market rates. Well, the rules and requirements in Lytech for maintenance, for onsite staff, there are, it's quite onerous. And so a tax break doesn't flow to his pocket. It stays in the unit, so that the unit can be viable for the thirty-year life cycle. If you look at the buildings now, when they were renovated, and the state that they're in, the gentleman had said that, that people were removed. The building's age, it has asbestos-containing materials in it. It would not be advisable to have a population in when we could potentially be disturbing those. So it, it's just not feasible to leave a population, especially a population of fifty-five or over, into a building when you're doing a renovation as large as this one is. As Mr. Kresnick said, we are basically gutting these down and redoing everything inside of them, except we're not touching any of those items as much as we can possibly avoid it. So be that as it may, you, you don't renovate a building while you have people living in it. It's just, it's not effective, practically cost-effective. It would kill the project.
Is there a process where you could allow those people that had to vacate to come back with first right of refusal of-
They're already on a list, sir.
Okay.
That was, that was done on day one. And there was a lot made about people being thrown out. Van Binsburgen, who is owned by Scott, and they do happen to be in the state of Minnesota. In Lytech, you, you don't just hire anyone to manage a property. It must be someone that manages a Lytech property. And so Van Binsburgen is one of the companies nationally that does this. You, you can't just hire any property manager. Van Binsburgen assisted everyone on their move. We didn't just say, get out. They assisted everyone to try to find them new places, knowing that, that the, or that the reserve was low, which is why we're trying to get through this as quickly as possible. And all those people will be welcomed back. Anyone that wanted to come back was put on the list, and they will receive right of first refusal, as Mr. Kresnick said. Van Binsburgen has all of this, has all of this documented.
Why'd you wait a year and a half to tell the residents?
Any other questions of this applicant?
I thought you were going to say gentleman, I got all excited.
Okay. Gentlemen. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have another comment, Mr. Kresnick?
Question, question came up, why, why did, why did we wait a year and a half to tell the tenants? Before we received the funding, obviously, we're not going to tell a tenant that we're doing a renovation that we don't know that we're going to be doing, right? So, you know, the second, the second that we could tell the tenants, we did. And we're so excited about this project, you know? We're fielding a lot of these questions, and they're, and they're great questions. We have sixty-one units that was getting ready to be boarded up, sixty-one units of affordable housing. We re-entered the program, twenty million dollars, we're not sixty-one units before, or after, just like we did before, right? Again, that land use restriction agreement has been filed with your county. Every single step of the way, we followed HUD's guidelines, Kansas Housing Resource Corporation's guidelines, with our tenants, met and exceeded them. And Commissioner Alt, to your point, the first thing that we did was create that waiting list. Anybody that was at the property beforehand or currently is more than welcome to come back. And I'll remind you, we still have the Lincoln Building that is available for relocation. Most people chose not to relocate to the Lincoln Building and relocate elsewhere.
That's because your AC's not working that building, and your plumbing overflows.
Commissioners, can I, can I, his time's up, right?
Just keep speaking, yes.
Okay, thank you. So, but, a lot of the points being made by the gallery are extremely valid, right? Every single thing that I have heard and everything that I believe is on those pieces of paper are more than likely true, which is HVAC units have been going out. They've been going out long before I even knew that this portfolio was available. Tuck pointing needs to be done. Windows are leaking. You name it. There's problems with this building. This renovation should have taken place three, four, or five years ago. The first time that you make an application for affordable housing tax credits, the odds of you getting that award are about one in three, one in four. It's a highly competitive process. We nailed it the first time, right? The second that we got that award of tax credits, that competitive award of tax credits, we started our closing calls. Once we believed that closing was imminent, we contacted the residents. But in terms of the condition of the properties, make no mistake about it, they were in very, very rough shape. So, much-needed renovation. The alternative here would be for the building to be shuttered up. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kresnick, before you sit down, much has been said about needed housing for our, I hate to say, older community at fifty-five plus or what have you. But is this going to be, are we going to price them out of this category even though they are on the waiting list that is, that is made already?
We're still abiding by the same program, right? Before, it was sixty percent of the area median income or less. Afterwards, it's going to be sixty percent of the area median income or less, with the exception of those twenty percent of the units that will be market rate. So what would that, twelve of the sixty-one units will be market rate? And I believe that that market rate conversion took place before we kicked everybody out. That request was made of the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. And so that is not, that is not a change here either. So, you know, we can, we can talk about, you know, people being kicked out, buildings being renovated, a lot of color, a lot of discussion as there should be here. The reality is that every step of the way, we met and exceeded expectations, guidelines by HUD, guidelines by KHRC. And as you can imagine, it's not a whole lot of fun for me standing up here, because I would love to make everybody happy, but the alternative is very, very easy to comprehend with the conditions that these buildings are in. They should have been done two, three years before. They did not have two to three years left in them. So call it kicking out, call it compensation displacement, you know, that, that'll be up to you. But, but it was, it was out of our control, and we were not at the helm when these properties turned south, you know, five-ish years ago. But we are the people driving the renovation, obviously, and we're, we're very, very proud to receive this competitive application.
Thank you.
Award.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right. Commissioners, I think we will just open it up for discussion now.
I have a question for staff.
Yes.
Say, everything gets approved and whatnot, and then later we find out there's an issue with parking and stuff like that. Does there, what, what can be done at that, at that point if there turns out there is just a parking nightmare for everybody? Is there a condition we can put in here to review later that something has to be done? Because I foresee it being an issue come Friday night, Saturday, in the public area, and then Sunday mornings around the churches. And I, those, those businesses and those churches have already been there. I don't want to displace their parking for people who just park on the street and never leave.
Yeah, so that's definitely something to consider on your part. I don't know that there is necessarily a condition you can put other than if... And the reason I say that is because you'd have to somehow quantify what a problem is, like a threshold of a problem. And that, that's the tricky part with this. If there is a way to quantify a threshold, that staff could be like, yes, you've exceeded that threshold, now we have to go back to the board and talk about it, perhaps. But from the applicant's standpoint, you know, I mean, there's two sides to this that makes it really tricky. You have the applicant who's looking to make a very serious investment in our community for a need that we seriously need. And then you have a community that's well-established, been there for, forever and ever. It's one of our, it's near the core of our community where, you know, it was originally plotted in eighteen sixty-two. So it's, it's, it's a very critical and an older part of the community. We, we have to be sensitive to that. The neighborhood is important, and taking their input is important. And that has to be weighed with the proposal that the applicant's bringing forward. It's a tricky, it's a tricky one that I don't know that I have a good answer for you.
I just, some sort of condition I wasn't aware of, or something like that, I didn't know if we could do that, but I, I get that it's...
And I do have the possible findings that maybe because it is tricky, that way you can kind of see the two sides of the coin when you're thinking about this. Let me pull that up, and then that might help with some of your discussion as you think about this. So on this screen, I have, and I believe we've placed it here, your seats as well, possible findings in support of the proposed application. I'll kind of go through them. Number one is the proposed change to allow general occupancy, multifamily residential use is consistent with the property's underlying R3 zoning district classification. The project also aligns with the downtown future land use designation in the comprehensive plan, which encourages infill development, the preservation of historic buildings, and high-density residential uses in this area. Number two, the proposed amendment continues the adaptive reuse of two historically significant buildings, and by removing the age restriction could potentially ensure their long-term economic viability and productive use, thereby preventing potential future vacancy and blight while fulfilling a primary goal of the original PDD. Number three, the request of modification to the number of off-street parking spaces from the required one-hundred-and-two spaces to the existing fifty-eight spaces is justified by several unique factors, including the availability of nearby public parking lots, the site's transit-accessible infill location, and the applicant's analysis suggesting lower vehicle ownership rates for comparable housing projects. Number four, the change from age-restricted use to a general occupancy use will not adversely affect the character of the surrounding neighborhood as the number of dwelling units and the overall residential nature of the property remain unchanged. Intensity of use is comparable to the existing senior housing and remains less intense than its original function as a middle school. Number five, the request for two ground signs is reasonable for wayfinding and identity as the development consists of two large distinct buildings, the former Roosevelt and Lincoln Schools, with separate primary entrances and official, official addresses of 220 South Seventh Street and 245 South Eighth Streets. Number six, public facilities and services are adequate to support the proposed change in occupancy as the number of dwelling units and the physical footprint of the development are not increasing. Number seven, the approval of the amended landscape plan conditioned upon meeting the city's tree unit requirement will ensure the site remains an aesthetic-pleasing, an aesthetically pleasing and well-maintained property that contributes positively to the downtown area. And lastly, number eight, the PDD zoning mechanism is specifically intended to allow for flexibility and deviations from the standard zoning regulations where an innovative site plan and overall public benefit can be demonstrated, which is applicable in this case in adaptively reusing a significant historic property. So those would be the potential findings in support of approving the applicant's proposal. And this would be the contrary, the other side of the coin. So these are the possible findings in support of denial of the application. Number one, the proposed fifty-eight off-street parking spaces represents a substantial deviation from the one-hundred-and-two spaces required by Chapter Forty-two of the Salina Code for a sixty-one-unit general multifamily apartment complex. The significant parking shortage is likely to negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood by increasing demand for limited on-street parking, potentially creating congestion and inconveniencing the nearby residents and patrons of adjacent churches. Number two, a shift from an age-restricted fifty-five-plus population to a general population is likely to result in a higher rate of vehicle ownership per dwelling unit. Therefore, the actual parking demand and traffic generation could be substantially higher than the existing senior housing use, making the current fifty-eight parking spaces inadequate. Number three, the general PDD, or the original PDD's parking reduction to only fifty-eight parking spaces was a significant concession granted specifically for a lower-impact elderly use. Removing the age restriction without providing the required parking for a general apartment complex undermines the original basis for the plan development approval and sets a challenging precedent for future PDD amendments where developers may seek to retain development advantages while removing the public benefit justifications. Number four, the subject property, while consisting of two buildings, is legally described and functions as a single unified planned development district on one zoning lot. Therefore, the request for two ground signs is inconsistent with Section Forty-two-dish-five-seventeen of the zoning ordinance, which limits properties in an R3 district to one ground sign per zoning lot. Number five, approving a forty-three percent reduction in the required off-street parking for a standard multifamily use could set an undesirable precedent for future residential and redevelopment projects, potentially weakening the city's ability to enforce its parking standards, which are intended to protect public safety and neighborhood character. Number six, the applicant has not provided sufficient evidence to demonstrate that the availability of public parking and alternative transit options will fully mitigate the on-site parking deficit for a general occupancy apartment complex of the size. And lastly, number seven, the applicant has not proposed any alternative transportation mitigation measures, such as enhanced bicycle parking, designated share, or ride-share areas, or transit incentives for residents, which might be expected to accompany a request for a forty-three, forty-three percent reduction in the required off-street parking. So those would be potential findings in support of denial. So as you see, it is a difficult decision, because there's, there's pros and cons for both sides of the coin that have to be considered and weighed. And we're here to ask any questions, but other than that, you'll have to kind of think about- And we're here to ask any questions, but other than that, you'll have to kind of think about how you want to handle that.
I recently was up in Des Moines for three days, and I stayed in a building that was a converted commercial building into apartments. And it was multi-generational, and it was very good. I was there for an Ironman race, and one of the hardest things to do before a race is sleep. And so, I was really concerned about the noise level with kids and things like that. They had noise monitors in there in each hallway, and it was not a problem at all. And they were well insulated. And the subsequent things I found, and what I thought was gonna really happen here, I thought this was gonna be about age, about, you know, look at all these kids running around, that kind of thing. And I haven't heard any of that. And actually, my experience was, in this place, it was fun. The kids running around, and they were interacting with a lot of the older residents. That was a good thing. Parking, for me, kind of comes down to who's gonna use these places. And I don't see, with a two-bedroom being the max, is that right? Is that correct? Okay, two-bedroom being the max, I don't see somebody with four kids moving in there. And then only still having two cars, I'm gonna guess. I see this as young professionals who want to be downtown and be near the happening stuff in the entertainment district and that kind of thing. And then retired people who want to be close to church and medical services and those kind of things. So, I guess in my head, I've justified the parking with the fact of who's gonna be staying there.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Commissioner Maxwell. Any other comments?
The parking doesn't seem to be a problem with me either, because if you look at Lee Lofts, Dustin, isn't that a similar, I mean, type situation?
It has some similarities. It is a little bit different in that the Lee Lofts is part of the C4 Central Business District zoning classification. So, it's, this, the zoning here is a planned development district. We're right on the edge of downtown, where Lee Lofts is on Santa Fe and is part of the downtown. And so, that would be one of the...
Yeah, but regardless of zoning and all of that, if you compare apples to apples, they have 103 units. They're only required to have 69 spaces. And they don't have as much, in my opinion, off-site parking potential as this property does in looking, you know, looking around. So, that's kind of why the parking doesn't, isn't really a concern for me.
Okay, are there any other comments from commissioners?
Yeah, I'd like to...
Could you call up page 29 of the presentation?
I'm with the same thinking. The parking's not that big of a deal. It was approved with 59 before, and there is a lot of parking off-street. As the applicant has pointed out, a lot of parking off-street to accommodate any extras that might come in with the underage of 55. And it's pretty obvious when you look at the map of what I'm talking about.
This is page 29. Are we...
Well, it's 29 on my computer here. 29 of 40.
The aerial...
Yes, the aerial of downtown.
Oh, the aerial of downtown. We can do that.
So, it shows a lot of off-street parking there.
Well, with the applicant...
All around the perimeter of the property is parking off-street.
Yeah, so what the applicant noted in their analysis is that their property has quite a bit of curbside parking adjacent in the street, which we don't count towards off-street parking, because it's in the public right-of-way, and it's available to anyone in the public. So, it's not something that they could reserve specifically for their use. Additionally, there is a public parking lot directly to the east, which is, again, public parking, just like the street, where the applicant wouldn't necessarily control that parking, and it wouldn't be reserved specifically for their tenants, but could be available to tenants as public parking for anyone that wants to park in the downtown area.
Yeah, I was just referring to the off-street parking, not the private parking lot, so.
Yeah, I just drove by there on the way here, and there was nobody on the east side of this property parked along the street at that time.
Nobody's gonna be there right now. It's during the workday, and it's not a weekend, or it's church Sunday, so.
You know, I kind of concur with where you guys are going. The parking is not the major concern here. I mean, we're dealing with downtown, and downtown has its own parking challenges. Is that a good word to use there?
Limitations.
Limitations. And it's something people have dealt with before, and we're gonna deal with that in the future. Hopefully, as Solana continues to grow, we're gonna deal with more and more of that. I personally want to thank everybody for coming and speaking their mind. Mr. Holloway, I can't speak for every commissioner, but I looked through this packet, and I looked at every one of these pictures. And to me, this is abhorrent for us to put our elderly citizens in situations like this. And with that in mind, I'm thankful for developers who will come in and look at a building who, that needs significant influx of funding and cash and work and so forth, and have the willingness to take over a historical building. We're gonna be dealing with the same thing with Memorial Hall, not too far away from here. It's in disrepair as well. That being said, I think, I don't know that we should be upset that we are taking this type of issue and making it better and making it available for other citizens of our community to reside in. And so, I just think that this is a good way of taking what is already there, a good way of looking at an historical building and being able to keep it in our community and make it feasible for our community to continue to use, as opposed to just letting it deteriorate and ending up tearing it down. There are challenges with every, especially historical building, but in-town building with parking and so forth. But I'm okay with the setbacks. The only thing I struggled with, as I was reading through this packet over the weekend and so forth, was the parking issue. And I have been convinced by, not just by staff, but by others, that this is just a parking event that is going to be ongoing. And people are just gonna have to realize that that's a challenge, and we can either deal with a challenge, or we can sit back and cry about it. And I believe as Solanans, we typically deal with challenges, and we move forward from there.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? And if there is none, I would entertain a motion. And reminding you, we need to do two separate votes. Is that correct?
Yeah, just because we do have those variations that are being proposed. The city commissioner want to know your recommendation on the variations, and then your recommendation on the preliminary development plan. The findings that we've provided would be sufficient for both of those actions.
Okay, we'll do one vote at a time, commissioners.
I would be willing to make a motion if I knew which, what I'm supposed to...
We'll do, you could say...
On page 20 and 21 of your staff report, so, or of the packet as you scroll, it's pages 12 and 13 of your, of the actual staff report portion of the...
My staff report ends at page 18.
14 to 15.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, it's 14 and 15, yes.
My bad.
Yep.
So, I would move that we approve PDD R3 zoning for the RL Lofts property, and should be amended to include those five modifications. Is that correct?
Listed on page...
Listed on page 14 of the staff report.
Rig it.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application PDD R3 zoning. This is action number one on page 14 of our report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to action item number two. Do I hear a motion on that agenda item?
I'd make a motion that we approve application PDD 04-4B with the findings in support of the application put forth by the staff.
All right, do we need to include what's listed on page 15 and 16? Yes.
Including...
Okay, all right.
Including the conditions of approval that are listed in them?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded to approve PDD 04-4B. It's listed on page 15 and 16 of the report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I appreciate all the comments provided today by the applicant and the public. We will move on now to our next agenda item.
Can I, I need to correct myself. This gentleman pointed out, I said there were six entities. That was a, I misspoke on my part. There's only four. President's Place bought it, RL Lofts, Roosevelt Lincoln Lofts, and RLGP LLC Incorporated are all owned by Tony.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holloway.
Not six, four.
All right, are there any administrative items, preliminary discussion items, or unfinished business?
We have no other items for you, Commission. We will meet the second meeting in September, and we'll do your annual business meeting, as well as your training.
I'll remind commissioners, that's at 3:00 PM.
Yes.
Not 4, 3:00 PM.
3:00 PM, two weeks from today.
Will we also have a 4 o'clock meeting then?
We will have a 4 o'clock meeting, yes.
And orders will be served.
Not in the budget, sir. From the previous year, we still have to come back.
Yes, we'd still like you to come back for annual training. Daisy has sent out your annual paperwork that you need to sign. If you don't want to print it yourself, and you need it to be printed for you, she will have copies printed at the next meeting.
All right, Dustin, is there anyone online?
We have Eric Tonner who is online.
Okay, Mr. Tonner, do you have any comments?
I'd move we adjourn.
Whoa, just a second, I'm waiting.
She said no comment.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'd move for motion to adjourn. Doug has already stated that. Do I hear a second? Moving second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.